Okay, I'd like to open the January 13th, 2015 meeting of the Warranton Board of Aldermen. First order of business, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Alderman Dryer, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the third item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And the first one we have is for the special board meeting minutes from December 13th, or December 16th, 2014. I have a motion to accept.
Make a motion that we accept the special board minute, meeting minutes from December 16th, 2014.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman, Alder Person Casserly, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to approve the board minutes from December 16th, 2014. Roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of December 16th, 2014. Entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Alderman Clark?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Person Hawley. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
And also that, at that meeting, we had an executive session, so I would entertain a motion to approve minutes from the executive session of December 16th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the executive session minutes for December 16th, 2014.
Second. Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve the minutes of the executive session from December 16th, 2014. Roll call vote.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, we open the meeting to the public. We ask if anybody has any comments from the public. You keep them to five minutes. Do we have anybody here? Nobody here from the public. I will also open the comments from anybody, any members of the board. Nobody has anything from the board?
I would just like to welcome you as our new mayor. I worked with you back as, as an alderman years ago, and I know you'll do a fine job.
Well, thank you. And thank you all for having faith and putting me in this position, so.
I would, I would like to comment on, good job on the blood drive for everybody who organized and pitched in. That was excellent. I heard the numbers, was greatly encouraged by it. If you don't mind, Chief, just asking real quick, I take it our officer's okay for being shot at from the news in the paper?
Oh, yeah. That was a BB gun incident. However, it was rather scary. He was getting his vehicle ready on the parking lot, and a carload of teenagers drove by, and he heard what he thought was a shot, and it hit something, whether it was a car or a building or whatever, and chased him down up Morgan, took everybody out into custody, got everybody charged up, but everybody's good.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
Just after Ferguson thing, we don't want any incidents happening out here.
Indeed, that's true. I just have a couple of comments. I guess the first one, I hope everybody read Alderman Ock's letter to the editor from the December 25th issue of the Warren County Record. I would like to thank him. I think it's sometimes something that needs to be said. We don't hear it maybe often enough, but I think a lot of times that's what keeps people from getting more involved in public service, is the amount of criticism everybody receives, be it the mayor, the board, the chief of police, whatever. But I would like to, it was a very, very good letter, very thought out, Gary, and I'm, thank you for your comments on that. Also, as you know, this meeting was supposed to be last Tuesday, so due to vacations that I had previously scheduled, I'll throw it out to you all. I will also be gone on February 3rd, I think is the next scheduled, or not the next scheduled meeting, but the February meeting. I will be on vacation then, so I know you asked me the last time to go ahead and postpone it for a week. I will open up that again, otherwise if, if not, Alderman Clark is, as president of the board, is very capable of handling, so what's your pleasure on that?
I have to check my schedule.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
I don't have any issues with it.
I'm out of town at the 10th, but that's all.
I, I have prior commitment.
On the following week, the 10th? The 10th, 10th.
Are we meeting next week?
Yeah, we'll have the meeting the 20th. Yeah, this is, I'm sorry, this is.
I just wanted to make sure.
I said the next, but I was, I was wrong, yeah.
That will be February 10th.
February 3rd.
Take it back one week, it'll be February 3rd.
It would be February 10th, yes.
Two of us won't be here.
So Alder, Alder Person Casserly and Alder Person Clark can't be there. We don't have to make a decision on it tonight, but I just wanted to get, get everybody's feedback on it, so.
Excuse me.
And that's really all I have, as far as the comment, as far as any of the comments I have, so. Next order of business will be the approval to hire Larry Barton as permanent part-time grounds and maintenance worker at $12 per hour with a start date of December 29th, 2014. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve to hire Larry Barton as permanent part-time grounds maintenance worker at $12 an hour and start dated December 29th, 2014.
Second. A motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve the hiring of Larry Barton as a permanent part-time grounds and maintenance worker at $12 an hour with a start date of December 29th, 2014. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the hire of Chase Nelson as a full-time grounds and maintenance worker at $12 an hour with a start date of December 29th, 2014. I'll entertain a motion to approve that. I make a motion to approve the hire of Chase Nelson as a full-time grounds and maintenance worker at $12 an hour with a start dated December 29th, 2014.
I'll second that.
Eric, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to approve the hiring of Chase Nelson as a full-time grounds and maintenance worker at $12 an hour, retroactive to December 29th, 2014. Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. And I see, I guess I jumped the gun on this.
You should make him stand.
Now we have an introduction of new employees. I'll turn it over to the first one, I'll turn it over to Chief Hottishell. Would you want to introduce your new patrolman?
Sure, thanks Mayor. Mayor and board, it's my pleasure to introduce Bobby Roberts. He comes to us with a great deal of experience, and if you didn't figure it out by now, his nickname is Bob Bob, so you can use that going forward.
So if there's any.
Okay, well, welcome aboard.
He's, he's in charge of any drowning accidents. Sorry. Sorry.
Okay, Guy, I guess I took your.
Actually mine.
Oh, Brad, okay, I'm sorry, I took your thunder then, huh?
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, the Larry Barton and Chase Nelson, they're both with the grounds department now, so I think we're back to full force, so appreciate you all hiring. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, and thank you. Thank you, Brad, I'm sorry I dropped.
No problem.
Okay, next order of business is to turn the meeting over to Brad Boosie Cruz, our grounds and maintenance director.
Good evening. I think you have some bid tabs in front of you. We had a emergency, our, we're looking for an emergency heating replacement out at the treatment plant last week. One of the coldest days of the year, the heat went out at the treatment plant, and it wouldn't be so bad, but all the equipment out there in the lab is all heat sensitive. We had alarms going off, I think we got, they got called at 3:00 in the morning, I came in at 6:00, and they were going off, and it's, we've got some heat in there now to kind of get us by and kind of get everything where we need it, but we, I called a person to look at the furnace, and it is, it's your original furnace from the, when the, when the place was built, so a little, right at 40 years old.
My God.
So I think we've got our money's worth out of it, so I've got the bid tabs in front of you, are, we called three different heating contractors, they came out, the one thing that's unique about this, this is a 480, three-phase heating unit that's in this, commercial, commercial air conditioners, 480, and there's not, it's kind of one of those, it's more of a commercial type, so I had, a lot of them didn't want to bid on it, so I got three of them that would bid, and I would recommend going with Fred Mueller of St. Peters, he's also the one that did our air conditioners here, and one of the big things about him is he gives a five-year compressor warranty and one-year parts and labor. Where Schrader's is only a year on the, just on parts, no compressor. So that was, that was one of my factors there, and also he can, he can install it next week, first part of either Monday or Tuesday of next week, where Schrader was going to be a week to a week, week and a half before they, they could get, get there. And the money was going to come out of the unappropriated funds.
Okay, we have any comments on it? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the replacement of heating, emergency replacement, I guess we should call it, heating for wastewater treatment plant, and award the bid to Fred Mueller Service in the amount of $5,400, as that is the low bid, also looks like a better warranty, or whatever you want to call it with it.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Alder Person Casserly, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the emergency replacement for the heating of the wastewater treatment plant. Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Thank you.
We've got the approval. Proceed, Brad, as soon as you need to.
I will do that.
Mike, before Brad leaves, the next item of business relates to the pool. I was just kind of curious when I read that, are there issues or projects that need to occur this season before the pool is up and running? I know we always discuss maintenance on the pool and.
We got a lot of it done, that right at the end of the year, we, we replaced, we had to change out the pump and the, and the motor. We've got, we had one spare one, so we got that all switched over, we got the piping, the valves, there's a couple of other items that we're going to have to address when we, in the spring when we start up, there, there'll be a couple of them there, the, one is a filter basket for the, for the slide portion of the filter, of the filtering system, which shouldn't be that big of a thing, and then I think we're going to have to look at into painting the interior of the bowl of, of the pool this, this year, and we're just going to have to see, and I, I think we're going to, we might look at doing that in-house. I've kind of been doing some reading on that, and just to see, because this last time we painted it lasted about two years, and I've been getting some of that out of what we've been painting the lines with, so I'm thinking we might be able to save some money and kind of get us through for another cou- couple of years, and other than that, we've got everything else pretty much, you know, a few other, I mean, we won't know until spring. I've got the controller for the spray ground, we had to send that off, we had some problems towards the end of the year, so I, I had to mail it back to the, to the company up in Minnesota, mailed it back to them, and they, they found some problems with the, in the computer of it, and they're supposed to be sending that back, other than hooking that up and just, and you know, basically hooking the wires back up, and that, that should take care of that, but for right now, everything seems to be doing fine. I mean, we, we did all the ADA stuff last year in it, with the showers and everything, and the, and the lift, and what have you, so I'm hoping we won't have a great deal unless something big happens during the winter.
So the structural issues on the slide that we were doing.
That is all, that took care of it last year, everything seems to be holding, I was on the, on the tower the other day, and seems to be fine, the paint's holding up, and the seams seem, seem to be doing, doing fine, so I'm, I'm hoping we can get by with a good winter, we, we won't have that many problems when we open it up, so.
But there's always a surprise in this.
Yeah, there's always, yeah, that's true, there's always a surprise, so.
I know, we're discussing, you know, personnel and pool management this early in the year, you think, well, what other things are going to go on that could surprise us, but.
No, I, I think we're, like I say, we've got quite a bit of the, the main parts, changing the valves and stuff, right at the, when we closed it down, we got all those hopefully taken care of, so we'll, we'll see in the, in the spring.
Thank you. I knew you were going to leave, so I wanted to ask that question for you. I assume you're leaving.
No, I'm just, I'm just staying around for a little bit.
Okay. I was going to say, before he takes off, is there any other questions for Brad? Okay, next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Finance Officer.
Thank you. My first item this evening is the discussion related to an extension of the pool management contract. We renewed and bid out this contract last year. It does have the ability for three one-year extensions, and I see no reason why we would not do that, since they were the only bid we actually received last year when we did bid it. They will keep their management fee for the new year at the same contracted rate. However, I asked them to give us a proposal to move the hours back to what the original pool hours were. If you remember, last year we shortened the pool hours and actually closed earlier. The public really did not see that as positive, and it did not have the effect that I think was originally anticipated, which was to overelect more private pool parties. We really did not see an increase in that as a result, and I think we reduced the number of hours for working parents that get home at 6:00 to be able to go and take their children and go some time with the pool before the pool closes. So the hours would move back to 12 to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 12 to 9:00 p.m. on Friday through Sunday. It does add a cost of about $17,000 over what the contracted amount was last year, because the contract did reflect those shortened hours. The other thing I've discussed with the pool management company is that I would like to see us have a more mature, experienced individual as the pool manager for the season. I think a lot of the problems that we experienced with customer service over the last couple of years really relate to the inexperience of the pool manager, so I'd like to see a more seasoned person in that position. They've said that they will attempt to do that for us for the season, and actually will start recruiting fairly quickly. It is amazing how quickly they start to hire staff for the pool season, but that additional cost would be about $2,500 for the new contract, so with those changes, the new proposal would be $96,336 for the 2015 season.
You mentioned that they want to do three one-year renewals, but it looks like the bill doesn't reference that when they hand it in the agenda.
We have the capability in the original contract to extend it for three one-year renewals, but in the past, when we've extended, we just do it for one year at a time. So this will be the second year of a potential three-year agreement that we have the ability to do. And there is an ordinance later on this evening, actually approving the mayor to sign that extension, if you all agree to that.
Well, I think the expanding the hours back to what they originally were is a good idea. You know, you consider several families who, who commute, live outside of town, by the time they get in, they eat, they want to get their kids together, they go up for the evening, and the pool closes short, I don't know that that's beneficial for what we're doing, so I, I think the expand of hours is still the way to go.
I agree.
Yeah, especially since we didn't get the, I think the idea was, you said the additional pool parties for later on and stuff, if that didn't happen, is that.
I think the thought was there would be more pool parties, and also allow more time for swim lessons. I did talk with the area manager for the pool company about swim lessons in particular, and questioned if they had the ability later in the evening, when there are fewer people in the pool, if they could not do some swim lessons in a separate part of the pool and still allow open swimming. She said she did not feel like that would be a problem at all. So I think there's ways to work around short of having the pool close early to allow for those things, so that our customers get the most hours possible.
Great.
Any questions on that?
My next item is the request for approval of the flex time for 2014 for the department heads. I think you have a listing in your Dropbox of those hours. Last year, we put a policy together and have utilized those calculations. It basically takes the hours from the time sheets, calculates those for the year, takes out of that 100 hours that we are calling the expected hours because of the position being what it is, it's anticipated there are going to be some hours over and above what full-time hours we have, and then used a factor of 23% for those hours above to come down to the recommended time. There is a 60-hour maximum that we set in the policy, and it applies not only to the department heads, but to all of the salaried supervisors. So my request for you is approval of the hours that are listed for those positions, which would be added to the available hours effective February 1st.
I think to remind the board on the discussion, this is not, and the public, this is not an overtime pay situation, it's, it's simply to allow employees who are coming in for certain meetings over and above what a normal work week is, plus 100 hours, to have some flexibility in their scheduling. There is no cost, and we did this as a management opportunity to support employees with flexibility.
And I think, in speaking for them and having talked with them several different length about this, I think it is seen very much as a positive, because it can be taken an hour at a time, or a half hour at a time, and unlike vacation or personal time, it doesn't require a lengthy preapproval. So if tomorrow something's happened that you need to be off 30 minutes ahead of time, it simply requires approval of the department head or myself, and it's not a real formal situation, so I think it definitely is seen as, as a huge benefit to those people.
I'll make a motion that we accept the flex hour proposal once presented by Terry.
Second.
The motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alder Person Hawley, to approve the flex time for the hours for, should that be 2014, 15 instead of 14?
Well, it's based on a 2014 analysis of hours, so.
Okay, roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. What else you have, Terry?
The only other thing I have is just a reminder that Monday is the planning meeting, 8:00 a.m., in the chair, ready to start work. At 7:30, there will be continental breakfast, coffee available, so Ensbroke again, and the room will be different this time. I know in the email I sent, it said same room, but apparently they're under construction, so when you come in the front door, you will go to the right instead of to the left, for those of you who were there last year.
Are we going to the conference center?
Yes. And at the gate, just tell them that you're with the city. Again, the law's supposed to be fine, so just a reminder for that. And for those of you who have not turned in your newsletter articles, I need those ASAP.
No.
And for those of you who did, thank you very much. We'll give the award on Monday for the early bird. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next, we have Michelle on the economic development.
Good evening. The only thing I have for you tonight is my economic development report, which you have.
Well, since you had another request for a spec building, do you feel urged to ask us to build a spec building?
Not at this time, because there's still buildings out there available. As a matter of fact, today Josh Beck was at the chamber meeting, and he was saying that he feels that the building's availability is becoming less, so hopefully we'll actually be more favorable, because we have more ground out here available than they have in, like St. Charles and St. Louis, so hopefully the tides will start turning soon.
When you receive these requests, especially for ground, do you contact, how do you get that message out to landowners who have ground?
What I do is I look and see if there's something in industrial that's around here, because we don't have a lot of industrial, and in that case, what I do is I usually make sure Josh has it, because Josh, since he is outside of our area, if it's something that's needing 100 acres industrial, and we don't have it in the city limits of Warranton, then I know he'll have those contacts that he can get a hold of.
But Michelle, you keep a list of what you know is available.
Yes, I have a listing of what's available in the city.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Gabrielle?
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the December invoices. I'm just looking for the formal approval of those, in the amount of $291,321.78.
Make the motion, we reapprove the payment of the bills in the $291,321.78.
Yeah, just to, this was the one that was approved by email, right?
Yes.
Since our, since our meeting was delayed, okay. Motion by Alderman Ock to, I have a second. No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Me neither. Good drama.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alder Person Casserly, to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $291,321.78. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, the next item I have is the financial reports for November. The sales tax, who knows, will, it was reduced to 9%, which is where it is for December also.
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
And that motion is approved. What else you have, Terry?
The only other thing I have is just a reminder that Monday is the planning meeting. 8:00 AM, in the chair, ready to start work. At 7:30, there will be continental breakfast, coffee available. So Innsbruck again, and the room will be different this time. I know in the email I sent, it said same room, but apparently they're under construction. So when you come in the front door, you will go to the right instead of to the left for those of you who were there last year.
Are we going to the conference center?
Yes. And at the gate, just tell them that you're with the city. Again, the law's supposed to be fine, so just a reminder for that. And for those of you who have not turned in your newsletter articles, I need those ASAP. And for those of you who did, thank you very much. We'll give the award on Monday for the early bird. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Next, we have Michelle on the economic development.
Good evening. The only thing I have for you tonight is my economic development report, which you have.
Well, since you had another request for a spec building, do you feel urged to ask us to build a spec building?
Not at this time because there's still buildings out there available. As a matter of fact, today Josh Beck was at the chamber meeting and he was saying that he feels that the building's availability is becoming less, so hopefully we'll actually be more favorable because we have more ground out here available than they have in like St. Charles and St. Louis. So hopefully the tides will start turning soon.
When you receive these requests, especially for ground, do you contact, how do you get that message out to landowners who have ground?
What I do is I look and see if there's something in industrial that's around here because we don't have a lot of industrial. And in that case, what I do is I usually make sure Josh has it because Josh, since he is outside of our area, if it's something that's needing 100 acres industrial and we don't have it in the city limits of Warrenton, then I know he'll have those contacts that he can get a hold of.
But Michelle, you keep a list of what you know is available.
Yes, I have a listing of what's available in the city.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Gabrielle?
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the December invoices. I'm just looking for the formal approval of those in the amount of $291,321.78.
Make a motion, we reapprove the payment of the bills in the $291,321.78.
Yeah, this was the one that was approved by email, right?
Yes.
Since our meeting was delayed. Motion by Alderman Ock to, I have a second. No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Me neither. Drama.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderperson Kesslerly, to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $291,321.78. Roll call vote.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Next item I have is another change order from Gonzalez Engineering, and this is for geotechnic boring. They did process 11 bores, and when they did the bores, if you get to a certain point where it's surface to unsure of if it's work, rock, or hard clay, they want to come back in and rebor four other locations. And two of them are close to 70, then one where the lift station is going, and the other one is at the plant. And it's a total of $9,485. Entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the change order for the additional geotechnical services in the amount of $9,485.
Motion?
Fight, fight. Fight over the second.
Fight, a tie, whatever. Motion by Alderperson Holly, seconded by Alderman Ock, to approve the change order number two for additional geothermal or geotechnical services in the amount of $9,485. Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Next item I have is a task order for Gonzalez Engineering for the new bridge at the wastewater treatment plant. And that's a cost of $29,944.
That's almost half the price that we paid for the land. Is this going over the new land?
It is. Yeah, it's, the property that we purchased is where the new bridge is going. The bridge that we have in place now restricts the flow and has to be, will have to be rebuilt. So we're going to remove that bridge, turn it into a low-water bridge so it doesn't restrict the flow from the effluent and put it ahead of the effluent. So when it, because when it rains real hard, we have to go in a different way and we can't get across the road.
So we have a ballpark idea of what a new bridge is going to cost us?
Not at this time. Our goal is, what I like to do is for us to actually do it ourselves. We'll probably have somebody set the bridge, we'll dig the road and put the road in ourselves. So this will give us the plans and all that that we need, make sure that the Corps of Engineers will have something to say about it, DNR will have something to say about it.
So this will be a bridge, it won't be a public bridge, it'll be a bridge just to get to the plant.
But he's going to need a new piece of equipment to do it.
I didn't want to say.
I ain't got that far yet.
The bridge over the River Kwai. I expect you guys to be whistling when you put it in.
I make a motion that we approve the task order number 15 for the secondary wastewater treatment plant access road in the amount of $29,944.
I'll go ahead and second that. Motion by Alderman, Alderperson Holly, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to approve the Gonzalez task order number 15, secondary wastewater treatment plant access road in the amount of $29,944. Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Next item I have is the task order through Cochrane Engineering for supervised program renewal update. In 2010, Cochrane did a water study, and DNR gives you a five-year program. We just need to renew that with DNR. So for $750, they'll do the renewal, and we can proceed with the other project that needs to be done and schedule what needs to be done. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve task order number two for $750 to Cochrane Engineering.
Second.
I have a motion, but, oh, I'm sorry, Gary.
Do the question. Weren't they supposed to look at, that wasn't on the water side, on our ability to handle more volume coming in in our plant that was originally designed for? Or is, that's not related to this, is it?
No, that's to approve back a few things ago.
Okay.
For the study.
Yeah, it was Gonzalez.
The anti-degradation study.
So this is just basically updating paperwork?
For, it has, it's a plan that was drawn up showing what the improvements need to be to our water system for the next five years.
Okay.
And so it's been five years since it was approved, and so they just need to update it and get it reapproved by DNR.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderperson Holly, to approve the Cochrane Engineering task order number two for supervised water program renewal in the amount of $750. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Next item I have is task order number three through Cochrane Engineering, and this is the approval for water main upgrade on Middletown Road for $4,410. We're going under the railroad tracks on this one, so there'll be a bore under that railroad.
So I know I'm going to get a call on this. So if people see the survey after, they're not going to be surveying all the way down Middletown Road, they're just going to do the area around where the bore is going?
That's correct. There'll be on both sides of the tracks, maybe 100 yards on both sides.
Does that pipe, that water pipe go down the middle of Middletown Road, do you know?
As you're going up Middletown Road, it is on your left-hand side.
Okay.
And then it crosses into the field, and there's two valves on both sides.
Is there a timeframe for us to complete that, or?
That was, it's in our supervised program, and it's on the agenda for this year, but that all depends on what the railroad does to us.
That's all that's the case. Okay, thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the task order number three to Cochrane Engineering for water main upgrades on Middletown Road in the amount of $4,410. The motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve Cochrane Engineer Task Order Number Three for Water Main Upgrades on Middletown Road in the amount of $4,410. Roll call vote.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
You're still on, Guy. Yes, sir. Task order number four through Cochrane Engineering. This would be Moccasin Drive for a new hard service for the road for $6,690, and the budget amount is $27,000. This also is a project that we're going to try to complete this year, this fiscal year.
Is this the road behind the funeral home?
It's.
On the side.
On the side.
Yep.
Behind the, there's houses, there's Lutheran Church.
Right.
This is the one we took over that nobody had claimed the road, and we took it over. It's the only gravel road in town that we knew of at the time. I'll make a motion that we approve the task order number four from Cochrane Engineering for a total of, whatever Guy just said, because I don't see a total.
$6,690.
$6,690?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Kesslerly, seconded by Alderperson Holly, to approve the Cochrane Engineer Task Order Number Four, Moccasin Drive. It's a new road in the amount of $6,690. Roll call vote.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Next item I have is task order number five through Cochrane Engineer, and this is the Highway 47 sidewalk and lighting from Veterans World to the railroad. The original would be $8,220. That's to see if it's feasible to even do, and then if we come back and it's feasible, then the, it would be an extra $11,950 to do the paperwork and get everything lined up for construction plans.
So this is a sidewalk on the east side of 47?
To match the other side.
And then the lighting, when you say lighting?
Well, you'll have lights, you'll have the sidewalk and lighting just like on the other side.
Will they match the other lights?
Well, that would be our goal.
I mean, that was my idea to do, to look at this project because I thought we're trying to create a look for coming in town. If you had, and those lights looked fabulous, you know, at certain times of the year with ribbons and bows up and colors on, if we had the same look on both sides of the Highway 47, I think it would make a statement, or certainly people would remember that when[1630.66] would remember that when they came to Warrenton. It's, oh yeah, it's the town with the decorative lighting and bows and all that.
The bows, Brad's bows.
Maybe we can get tourism to pay for it.
You know what, that's not a bad idea.
Mike, just remember that when you go back.
I make a motion that we approve the Cochran Engineering Task Order Number Five for the Highway 47 sidewalk and lighting in the amount of $8,220. And if the right-of-way and topographic data allow for the sidewalk, an additional $11,950.
Second. Just one question. This is going to, this has to go with approval of the railroad too, right? Or does?
I don't believe so because we won't be on the.
It won't, okay.
It'll probably stop.
We won't be able to be up to the railroad because the sidewalk can have to stop at the street. So it's going to, I don't, I can't remember now, that first street.
Yeah, because there's no bridge on the east side there, but you certainly could run the sidewalk up to Ashland.
Yeah, stop at Ashland and run off because we've just put some sidewalks in there.
It will require MoDOT approval, however.
Oh, yeah, of course.
MoDOT, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, did we get a second?
Yes, I second.
Oh, sorry. I was formulating a question, but. Have a motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Ock, to approve the Cochran Engineering Task Order Number Five, Highway 47 Sidewalk and Lighting for an amount not to exceed $20,170, with the civil design total of $11,950 requiring prior approval from the city prior to proceeding. Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Kristen Casterly?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Are you sure?
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guy.
No, you twice, thank you, guy.
A lot of work to tell together.
Okay, now we have, looks like more bills to pay, right?
No bills to stamp.
Bill number 01-15, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Wilson Waste Systems for refuse recycling and yard waste collection.
Call for the first reading of bill number 01-15.
Second.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Wilson Waste Systems for refuse recycling and yard waste collection.
Call for the second and final reading and passage of bill number 01-15.
Second.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Wilson Waste Systems for refuse recycling and yard waste collection. What do we need?
Melody wants to call.
Oh, we got a roll call vote?
She does the reading.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Kristen Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm taking your job again.
That's all right.
Okay.
He did it.
He did it.
Both times?
He read it both times.
Okay. It's being efficient. I just want to make sure.
It's still official, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Call for the introduction of bill number 02-15.
Second. Call for first reading of bill number 2-15.
Want to do a motion?
Oh, it was a motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Clark.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a contract between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Cannon General Contractors Incorporated for the Highway 47 Sidewalk Project, Warrior Avenue to Dry Fork Creek.
Call for second reading.
I'll call for the second final reading and passage of bill number 02-15.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second reading.
And passage.
Second and final reading of bill number 2-15. An ordinance, oh, go ahead.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a contract between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Cannon General Contractors Incorporated for the Highway 47 Sidewalk Project, Warrior Avenue to Dry Fork Creek.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Kristen Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes. I do have a question on this. I'm reading the contact. So this project on the sidewalk, they have 120 days to complete from the day of notice. So do we normally just give them notice as soon as the bill's passed?
Yes.
So the clock will start, so this, because this is a very visible public sidewalk. So 120 days, it's what, four months? So by the end of the school year, going into the summer, that sidewalk in theory should be in place?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll call for the first reading of bill number 03-15.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Dreyer for the first reading of bill number 3-15.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a service contract between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Vario for completion of the comprehensive master plan.
You have a question on this. I noticed in the body of the contract, there's no dollar amount and the not to exceed some, is that right?
Yeah, it's contained in the Exhibit A, which was their proposal.
Okay, so we just ignore that part. I see, it says or, okay, thank you.
I'll call for the second final reading and passage of bill number 03-15.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second reading and passage of bill number 3-15.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a service contract between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Vario for completion of the comprehensive master plan.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Kristen Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Entertain a motion on bill number 4-15.
I'll make a motion for the first reading of an introduction of bill number 04-15. Second.
Have a motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Hawley for the first reading, introduction, first reading of bill number 4-15.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign the Morgan Park Pool Management Agreement extending and amending services between Midwest Pool Management and the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
I'll call for a second final reading of, and passage of bill number 04-15.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dreyer for second and final reading and passage of bill number 4-15.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign the Morgan Park Pool Management Agreement extending and amending services between Midwest Pool Management and the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alder Kristen Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Schluter? I was just done, sorry.
You know, on this retreat or this long-range planning, wasn't there an ordinance passing over years that said that the president of the board had to cook breakfast? Or did I misread that ordinance?
I'm certain it's there somewhere, although I've been.
Yes, I'm having a continental breakfast. I said cook. It was a try. Make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Well, if we got anything, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So vote.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Hawley to adjourn. Roll call vote.
You can just say all those things.
All in favor. Oh, okay, I see. I didn't read that part.
That's the worst part. Right there, that ending part is the worst part.
Whoever wants breakfast, be at my house at 6:00 in the morning. I'll have.
Is that what time Mary Jane leaves?
I'll have eggs benedict.
Terry, did you say they're going to have food?
Yeah, they have food.
I'm amazed, I got.
That ending part is always the most obnoxious to try to figure out. I swear, if it wasn't for Fred, for like the first one year.